Going to go ahead and get started with our public session. With some Bob Ross music. Welcome, everybody, to this meeting of the Franklin School Board, October 14th. We will start with our salute to the flag. If everybody could stand in turn.
My flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Coming where the meeting's posted as required. Excellent. So tonight, we're going to, because of the number of people here, who I believe are here for one thing, we're going to swap two items and we're going to go ahead. We will come back to public participation, but we do want to start off with item number five, "Our Students, Our Schools," and so we will go ahead and toss things over to Principal Everett.
Good morning, good evening, everybody. I'm Ms. Everett, for those of you that don't know me, I know you guys do. I'm the principal of Franklin Middle School, and I asked my team leaders if they would have some of their students come this month to share with you some of the things that we have instituted at the middle school in order to build community. And these are all parts of Responsive Classroom, and we have done them in many different ways. So we are starting off with our fifth grade. They are going to, I'm not going to tell you a whole lot of what they're doing, because I'm going to let them do that. The fifth grade will start, and then the seventh, no.
Eighth.
Eighth grade is going, then the seventh grade is going, and then the sixth grade is going. Good thing I taught English, right? Because that was like some Milwaukee number. So I'm going to go ahead and let the team leaders introduce their students, and then the students are going to actually run some activities with you perhaps. So you've got a feeling for what it's like to be at Franklin Middle School. Okay, take it away, fifth grade.
So I am Branda Vandell. I am the fifth grade team lead. Tonight, we have Lorraine and Eve Vandell with us. And this grade is going to start off the meeting with a greeting. And we would like to explain why we start with greetings.
We start with a greeting so everyone can feel, feel good.
And we'll greet each other, make sure we know we're greeting, just a handshake.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, whatever time of day it is, hello. Hi, Jenny.
Hi there.
I'm home.
Michael. Hey, how's it going? All right? Good to know.
And that's how we would start our community meetings.
And I will tell you, sometimes we do things that are a little bit different, like we use accents. Sometimes we, sometimes we actually have different greetings where you are throwing pieces of paper across the room and somebody else has to catch it and that whoever's name is on that. So it's not just a straight greeting every night, every day, but... Gentlemen, ladies, have anything else you would like to tell the school board about this? Okay, thank you very much. Here in from fifth. Okay, now. Seventh grade?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
We start young and then we move from oldest to youngest.
I'm going to tell you that I'm going to be playing a video in the background for this. I'm not playing the sound, correct?
Sure.
Right, I'm just playing it in the background and they're going to explain it to you. So you may want to look up every now and then. And I believe I actually have the sound off this time. Oh, and again, really, wow! I know, I'm sorry. I'm going to make, I'm going to make, I'm going to play speed on this. It's turned off on my background. There we go. Okay.
So one of the things that we're doing with the eighth grade is we are watching Bob Ross, since he, for our mindful moments, since he has just a very calming way of explaining things, so it will be such that mindful.
For like the example, like one of like the things that we benefit from, from like watching his videos, is math, because like you have to like, in math, you have to go like step by step to like figure out the problem. And like watching his videos kind of helps us like break down the steps. So Bob Ross, he has a simple and easy way to guide you through things, and it will help us talk to others that way.
It's okay, we'll let you know.
And he has a, he also has a famous quote. We don't, we don't make... He also said, "We don't make mistakes, we make happy accidents." And something I've been saying is, small steps can take you a long way.
So, you know, in conclusion, it is just a very helpful and good learning process to show that, you know, small things can make a really, even the simplest steps, simple ways to become a remarkable landscape, like having a good...
Any questions for these guys? We, look, we use Bob Ross at my work when we have calm moments as well. So this, like at Southern Hampshire University, in my team, we use him as well, so I love this.
I find it beneficial with the kids, especially this group, they can be very remotus. For them, I've noticed a change with some of them sitting and talking to each other, like some of them really analyzing it and thinking, and they don't like to do that all the time, with things with schoolwork, but with this, they find willingness to do it. I've been asking regularly, could we recreate some of his paintings, or at least try to? So we need to procure some of the materials to do that, but I'm very seriously interested in doing that with this group, and they actually seem interested in actually trying it themselves. So it's a work in progress, we're going to try to do it before the end of the year, definitely. If not by Christmas, so we'll see how it goes.
Now, second grade.
I'm Mr. Neal, Kelly Neal, I'm the seventh grade team lead. We are doing circle time, so ladies, you can face the mirror.
Circle time is the next part of our morning meeting. In circle time, we answer and discuss the question for the topic of the week. This helps us in many ways, like letting everybody feel like they have a voice and are heard. Also, by listening to others, so we can understand them better and build our community in our class and in our school.
How we do it is by having everyone bring their chairs into a circle facing each other. We choose a volunteer to go first, and the others listen when they're, when they answer. Sometimes we ask questions about the speaker's, what the speaker said after they are done. Other times, we move on to the next person. The volunteer gets to choose the direction we move in, the circle. And ask the person for their answer.
This week's topic is humidity.
The question for this week is, what might we do when we see somebody getting treated badly by another person? Any volunteers? Start.
I'll volunteer.
They're pretending that you guys are the class.
That's all right, that's all right.
They're running a circle time.
Are we opening this up to the floor also? There's anybody in the audience that would like to be part of the circle? You're encouraged to come on up. Okay. Seeing no movement from the audience, Bob are going to get a couple of kids up here. All right, so can you repeat the question for me? And I'm deciding that we're going to go this way.
What might we do when we see somebody getting treated badly by others?
So I always like to think that the best thing to do is go stand up for the person and at least offer them some support. Because I don't like it when someone treats me poorly, so I would want to make sure that if somebody was being unkind to me, somebody nice was there, because I wouldn't feel so alone.
I would approach and try to understand what was happening. How did, how did that, how did they get there? Maybe do some listening.
I agree with everything Virginia said.
Yeah, I think I would definitely try to figure out the root of the issue and then try to intervene so that the rudeness stopped.
Same, with Jenny.
I think similarly, just try to understand like what the issue is, and then try to build little like parallels between like the two people, like, oh, you like this, and you both like this, like, aren't we all the same, kind of happy, right? Like, build little agreements, start from that.
Just have the person who's not feeling loved to know that I'm a safe person. And to try to get to the bottom of it as well.
I think just beyond what everybody else said, is just physically being there, being supportive next to somebody who's being bullied or feeling bad. That's, that's helpful, and everything else, everybody else said. I'm lucky I'm towards the end.
I want to help them so they don't feel alone.
I'd like to ask some questions if there's someone who makes, isn't being nice to, and checking in with them, and like de-escalated, and so, talk to the person, so being mean yet, but I hope the person who is a good person, and ask some questions, and see if we can get them to.
I was sort of on par with that, and support, because it was deep argument, also, yes.
I think I...
Yeah, I've been talking to this student.
Just seems to happen a bit too often. I thought we were rude, and I mean, it's kind of a shame, and you have to, I figured out.
Some of our questions are like this, they're the same questions, it's kind of a more personal, like, yeah. Last week, there was a, was something you found very irresponsible? Yeah, that was last week, so I was interested in, anybody from all the students, stop in the neighborhood? You start.
Okay, we're trying to humble them, because people tend to speak out of emotions rather than what's actually going on, so.
You.
I agree with what everybody has said.
Do I, do we have any questions for these young ladies? Nice job. Good work, girls. Okay, and last but certainly not least, we have the sixth grade teams. Just a little though, not like that before.
Hello, I'm Ms. Davis. I'm a sixth grade team leader and social studies teacher, and I'm going to let my team students take it from here.
Hello, we are the sixth grade, and we are here to tell you about what a mindful moment is, why it is important, and then we'll model it for you. I am Rosie Ward, this is Alina Diaz, and this is Anthony Costa. First, we begin with what a mindful moment is. A mindful moment is when you purposely take a short pause to relax, focus on your thoughts, feelings, body sensations, and your surroundings. I'm going to talk about emotional and behavioral benefits of a mindful moment. First, mindful moments reduce stress and anxiety. It helps to calm your mind and focus on your feelings. Next, it also helps you to manage your emotions and deal with difficult thoughts and feelings. Finally, mindful moments help you to increase your positive emotions and improve commitment.
Hello, I'm Alina, and I will be talking about the academic benefits of mindful moments. First, mindful moments help with critical thinking, problem solving, and memory. Next, mindful moments help us when we feel overwhelmed. Last, mindful moments help you to reset your mind and get your, and get your body ready to work.
And finally, I'm going to talk about how our, how mindful moments help improve our cognitive or brain function. First, mindful moments help us with focus and consideration. Plus, they also help with our action, attention, and our memory too. Did you know that mindful moments help to increase oxygen to our brain when we practice breathing exercises? Now, we will model a mindful moment for you. Ms. Everett, can you please cue up the video for us?
Yes?
How's that line?
Deep breathing helps your brain feel calm, so you can think clearly and calmly. It's a way to control worries, anger, and fears. Today, we're going to practice a breathing exercise called box breathing. First, we'll see what box breathing looks like, and then we'll try it together. We picture a box, or trace one on the table, our hand, or our arm. Start at the lower corner. Breathe in for a slow count of four seconds as your finger traces up the side of the box. One, two, three, four. Hold your breath for four seconds. One, two, three, four. Breathe out for four seconds. One, two, three, four. Now, hold your breath. One, two, three, four. Now, let's practice it a few times. Get comfortable in your chair, sit on top, and relax your shoulders. Breathe in, one, two, three, four. Hold, one, two, three, four. Breathe out, one, two, three, four. Hold, one, two, three, four. You have just completed one box breathing cycle. This can be repeated as many times as needed until you feel calm. Let's do it again.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I'm just getting cute. Anthony?
We hope you have enjoyed our presentation and have learned about mindful moments, why mindful moments are an important part of our morning meetings. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Just a statement, I wish that I had learned this a lot earlier, because I'm learning similar things today at my work, in courses that we're taking. So it's great to see that you guys are doing this and getting a head start.
Any other questions for my sixth grade? Question, were you, did you know about this before you started doing things like this? Or did you learn it through this? A little bit of both? Well, this particular video, we chose like together, you know what I mean? So I asked them what type of, because there are different types of mindful moments. Sometimes it's just a calm scene that you just focus on. Sometimes it is, you know, informational, it tells them, you know, what you're feeling, why you're feeling. But they wanted to do, they picked the breathing, and so, you know what I mean? And they also researched all of this. They each picked a portion of this, researched, we put it in kid-friendly language, and so this really was driven by that. What's your favorite mindful movement, mindful moment? Deep breathing?
I learned this in like first grade, I think.
You're so far ahead of us.
Like somewhere near that, so.
Thanks, guys. Is that the morning meeting? That's the morning meeting. Well, sometimes we do activities also, like, you know, dodgeball games, or rock, paper, scissors, competitions and things like that, it just depends on the time. But we thought we'd do four and keep it under a certain amount of time for you guys. Do we have any other questions?
I have one. For the group who asked about what to do when you see somebody bullying somebody, I think it's important, I think all the answers given were great, but doing something is probably the most important thing, in my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, we're awesome, all of you.
Thanks, parents.
Thank you, families.
Really appreciate it. It is so great for us to see y'all. Now, she gets to run away before we hit the boring stuff. You're welcome to say, but if you want to go. Everett?
Thank you.
Okay, confirm, okay. We'll let them take their, and then we'll, so that we're not competing. Oh. Okay, we'll move on now to, we'll move back to item number four, our public participation. As a reminder, we have up to half an hour dedicated to this, and we ask anybody from the public who would like to speak, just state your name, what order you're in, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing that, we'll close public participation and move on to item number six, our recognitions.
Shall I have some recognitions? So I want to recognize Jack Finley, and Ruth Magina, and Kayla Morse, for winning the elections for the school board last week. Congratulations. Three years, three years for Jack, three years for Ruth, and two years for Kayla. So happy to have you all for another long time, so congratulations.
And also, congratulations to Adam Heath, who will be joining us.
Adam as well.
And January. Yep. Yep, he'll be joining us in January, representing Ward. Yes, congratulations. Ah, we could go today. Any other recognitions currently? Okay, we can then move on, and we'll move on to our FHS student representative report with Kaylee.
We have college events going on. First off, our college night, which is happening during the first meeting. I just, I suspect, LSCC is also hosting an open house on October 22nd. We had held, you know, two, five, and this is an opportunity for students to learn to parent the audience, to learn more about their program. We thought we should stop you, wow, okay. We staffed the campus and asked questions. This is a student station, it's a senior college, and we need to start a new opportunity. The National Honor Society sells booby grams, free donors for one, five for two. They can be worked online, with them, and load or patch, or a jet. They can be sent to many campuses, ensuring that students and their main teacher. During the year, these days allow transfer students to be responsible students to the classes and go up to school without being asked for teachers. Other names will show that, again, we're a, we're a, and the university students are to pass all their classes, they need to obtain a 92% of the points or higher, and if you don't have, we'll differentiate those. The students who have earned it are free to go to school. All coming this year has had lots of energy and enthusiasm. I love seeing a lot of participation in classes and all of the activities that we were, that we held, from games, different hallways, ten degree. I'm happy to say that seniors have won upcoming, but a total of 8,440 points, followed by the sophomores with 7,340, then the freshmen at 6,330, and then sadly, the juniors last, with 5,620 points. The dance was held inside due to the dry weather not allowing us to have the annual log fire. I would also like to mention the youth and government class this year. They have toward the fire department and police department so far. I'm excited to hear about their mock city council meeting this year. I would also like to mention the inner child art class with Miss Crafts. They have been going to the elementary school doing crafts and reading books to the students there. That's all I have for tonight.
How are the points given out?
A lot of it is like through like voting with like the hallways and the floats, and then we have like themes that will go on during tornado support. So it's just like whoever wins, they get their points, and then, you know, it all adds up.
Yeah, we had open house that night as well, so we had hundreds of people won, so this class had them, they got 10 points per person for their grade, whoever brought the most people in, so. So I think, I think the freshmen, they usually win that one, they got like 900, you know, they had nine people show up. So brother, sister, cousin, uncle, nephew, they all count the same.
It was a record, right?
Yes, yes.
I got to see the hallways, they were incredible. I can't pick favorites, but I have one, but I, same, I love them all.
And seniors.
Which one was that?
That was the Mario one.
Oh, he jumped up.
That was really good.
That was really, that was really good.
I love the rainbow road.
Yeah, I love the music, I'm saying. Sorry. Any other questions, comments for Kaylee right now?
Would there be pictures on the web?
Some of the Facebook.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of pictures posted.
About four, five hundred pictures on Facebook.
Wonderful. Next, we can go to approving our, for our board minutes. We have our regular and non-public sessions for September 15th. Take motion out then.
A move that we accept the public minutes from the September 15th meeting.
All right, motion made by Jane, seconded by Michael. Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Marie's standing. All right, minutes passed, and then we go for non-public.
A move that we accept the non-public minutes, it was September 15th, and it remains sealed.
Excellent. Motion made by Jane, seconded by Ruth. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? One abstention, Marie. All right, those minutes are passed and will remain sealed. Thank you all very much. Next up, we have our most riveting financial report with Jefferson, Repump, Grant.
Okay. Hand those out, Jefferson, or?
I thought we were going to do that during your session.
Oh, that's right, yep.
So I uploaded financial reports to the board folder, hopefully you've had a chance to peruse those. We haven't had a finance committee meeting to discuss any of this stuff. Our meeting is going to be towards the end of the month here, so. But I'll go over it and just point out the highlights. If we look at the budget, it reflects that we have about $125,000 deficit, but that comes with a caveat. As last year, the particular drivers of our financial challenges are caused primarily by special education. If I take the segment of the budget that is related to special education costs, we are actually $677,512 over budget due to our unanticipated expenses that we are once again dealing with, out of district placements, or extra needs, and things of that nature that we hadn't expected during the budget process last year. Obviously, that was a big driver of our situation last year, so I'm not throwing in the flag at this point. I'm not worried at this point, we're still early in the year, there's a lot of fluctuation, a lot of variables, so it's not something to get too wound up at this point. One thing I do want to point out also, which when we get to Dan's first order of business for him, was discussing the school care assessment, which obviously is big news, if anybody's paying attention to the news. Concord School District got hit with $2 million bill from that. And obviously, they're suffering, special education costs, and they're shedding their, suffering from $5 million budget shortfall in their perspective. Granted, they have $115 million budget, so it's a little different than our just under $20 million budget here in Franklin. Our assessment of that school care cost came to $288,132, so, um, obviously significantly less than the $2 million. So that deficit does have that cost reflected in it at this point. Now, the thing that, um, isn't being reflected right now is we had a lot more fund balance that we ended up with in FY '25 to carry forward into FY '26. A part of it, there's $242,702 that, um, I talked about in the last board meeting, that hasn't been appropriated in our budget, so once that does get appropriated in our budget, it actually puts us back in the black, and it'll be more like a $90,000 under budget at this point. The board approved the excess fund balance that we got, but we still have to bring that forward to the city council. Challenge is the city council is in transition, they just got their new city manager on board, who was, um, I guess fairly green in the whole process, so, uh, once that gets taken care of, then hopefully we can get a resolution number from the city and then be able to bring it forward to the city council to approve us to, uh, appropriate those extra funds. The fund balance that we ended up with, I think I spoke to last budget, our last meeting, was $588,188, and we had budgeted $44,800 approximately, so left about a net of $536,000 that we could use towards our current year budget. Now, the equity aid came in at $293,308 short, so that extra fund balance took care of that lump piece, and that left at $242,702 to appropriate additionally to our budget. So, once that's done, we'll reflect it in our future budget reports. Moving on, the other side of the equation is our revenues, which is another bright spot. If you had seen the revenues, we actually, with the general fund, were only $31,522 under our budget revenues for the year. Obviously, a big chunk of it has to do that the excess fund balance is reflected in that number, but we have also other sources of revenue that will come in that we haven't received yet that aren't reflected, such as charter school aid, I had budgeted $40,000, I'm not sure where that will come in, but I presume it'll at least be more than that. So right there, that bumps us right up above our budgeted, um, revenues. We still have transportation aid, which hovers around $7,500. Medicaid funding, um, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out, we had about $88,000 of that last year. We also get E-rate funding, which is about $21,000, $22,000. And then, um, interest income on our bank account, um, we're at $46,000 already this year on a $60,000 budgeted number, and that's just for three months of interest, so, um, I anticipate us having more interest accumulated, um, as the year progresses. And then the other fluctuating piece is, um, our indirect costs, which is related to our grant administration, that we get to charge percentage of our efforts into the grant for any expenditures that we accumulate in those grants. So, um, we're very, pretty good shape on the revenue side. We did get a preliminary number for our special education aid, and special education aid, um, if you don't remember from what I told you in the past, is related to our out-of-district costs, eligible out-of-district in the prior year. And it always tends to get prorated, we have an entitled amount, and then a actual amount that we get, because the state only budgeted a certain amount towards it, but I had reflected $145,000 as our budgeted amount, and it came out at $179,000. This is a preliminary number, but that was something that was sent out to all the school districts to show, um, what they should expect, so, that's $34,255 above what we had budgeted in that case, so, um, right now, we're in a reasonably solid financial position. That's what I want to get across at this point, but again, we're very early in the year, it's only middle of October, and we've only been in school for, you know, a month and a half, so, um, that's all I had in that regard. So, um, we will discuss a little bit more with the, um, school care and other, uh, funding sources and challenges that we had, and breaking it down for you a little bit when Dan gets to that one, his agenda item. Does anybody have any questions for me? You know, that was a rapture.
Is the government shutdown affecting any?
So, the government shutdown, um, is affecting a few things. Our biggest grants, like Title I and IDEA, and I think Title II, we've been informed that those have been fully funded, the state had received the full amounts. There are other pieces of funding that are kind of stuck in limbo with the shutdown, like 21st Century, which is what's used to fund the, um, after-school program that Parks and Recs Department runs. And then there's Title IV funding, which, um, we don't have a whole lot in right now as far as what's budgeted. We have a couple of other grants too, that I'm not certain if they're fully funded right now, the CSI grants, because they kind of fall under the umbrella of Title I. So, we'll have to find out if those funds are still in limbo with the government shutdown with those pieces, but those are really the only, um, significant grant funding issues that we are concerned with at this particular juncture.
That's a great question, so, the Title I, we do, we have?
Yeah, we have, I, I looked on it today, they actually put the full allocation in there, which is $865,000, it's already actually on the grant management system right there, some of the other grants, they haven't done it yet, like IDEA hasn't been popped up. It was supposed to happen, I believe, at the beginning of this month, but obviously, the shutdown has caused some uncertainty at state level, and obviously certainly federal level, more so, and, uh, from what I heard, you know, they tried to, they have a platform, I think it's called G4, G5, um, that the state couldn't even access at this point with the shutdown. Whether that's been resolved or not, I don't know, but, uh, it's, uh, it's G5, actually, yeah. So, we will see.
Yeah, great question, uh, any other questions for Jefferson? Thank you. Okay, we will hop now to committee reports. Let's kick us off.
So, the, uh, the joint finance committee met on October 1st, and we discussed several topics, including, but not limited to, um, the insurance situation that Jefferson just mentioned around school care. We discussed some of our projected, uh, budget needs and, uh, our estimated decline in existing revenue for the '25, '26 school year. We talked about, um, some rough numbers on what it would take to sort of maintain our current levels, and some ideas about what sort of fixing, um, fixing our issues looks like long-term. We also talked about, um, some of our measures of success. City Councilor Bruce Marshall had mentioned that, um, he was never a good test taker, and so he doesn't believe that, um, things like standardized tests should be the end-all-be-all gauge of what success is. He asked for some great information around, uh, like post-school, um, activities, like what are our graduates doing? What field are they going into, are they going to, um, continuing education, are they entering the workforce, what are they doing? So overall, I think a really excellent meeting, and we kind of left it off with, um, was it a tentative October 30 date for the?
October 28.
October 28, thank you, just remember, as I guess it's my daughter's birthday. A tentative, uh, meeting that I'll let Dan go into more detail with, uh, with his updates later. That's it.
Thank you. Um, do we have another, the next joint finance?
It's not scheduled, we're waiting, we're waiting.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Other committees?
Can you read the notes?
Okay.
So unfortunately, I was not able to attend.
Oh, that's right, you weren't there, we could talk, okay, I too, I actually have, I, I brought it, I brought it. So I, have you been there, I forgot about that, so I2 just met recently on October 8th, and we explored, um, some possible new projects for, uh, kids, particularly at the high school, to possibly get behind, modeled after, um, Hopkinton around composting, um, and maybe looking into that, seeing if something students and, um, staff are into, um, just as something to kind of get everybody thinking about. We, um, covered some updates regarding artificial intelligence, our POG work, um, some special education updates. We had a preliminary view of the state assessment scores that we're going to look at now, um, so the I2 team has looked at those and has talked with administration about those, um, and we're going to talk more about that, um, actually now. And we will be meeting again on November 12th at 5:30. And policy, met on September 16th, and we almost finished the spring legislative updates. I believe we have four left to go through, and then we will be ready for when the fall updates come out. And the results of all of those discussions, we have, um, duh, 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 we have a couple that are going to administration for some detailed, specific work before we take any action on it, um, but you'll see, we have a number of policies that are for first read, and we have one withdrawn, um, to take care of today, so that is all the work of that. And we have our agenda to finish these up at our next meeting and work on some other currently relevant policies, and that meeting is on November 5th at 4:30 PM here. So that's policy and I2, are there any others?
When is the meeting for I2?
I2 is November 12th at 5:30 here. Uh, school board goals we have is 12, are there any other committee updates in the meantime? Okay, all right, so with that, all right, because half of our safety committee and our chair is not here, so we'll get that next month. Um, so we'll move on now to item 11, new business with Superintendent Legale.
Okay, have Jefferson pass out, kind of a mini summary page of where we're at with the swings in the budget with these things he just discussed. Wait till everybody gets that.
Okay, I'll leave it up for the board members.
Uh, somebody might need to share one of them there. I can share. Let's see how it is. I got a big table.
So this is just kind of a summary of the, the large swings that we've seen since July, since we've been talking about this. Just so you know how Jefferson and I have played this out in our budget to make sure that we stay ahead of, ahead of it as much as we can. You know, and pretty much he just discussed this, so this is going back to the cancellation of the federal grant, the not hiring of the assistant principal and the wood shop teacher. The lack, the, the less equity aid than what we had predicted, um, the school care assessment that we, that we're talking about now, that was one and a half months premiums, by the way, so everybody who had school care that was a school district had charged one and a half months premium, and that's how that played out with their reserves. City council is already aware of that, Liz and I let them know that, uh, the city council meeting, two weeks ago, last week.
Last week, last Monday.
Last Monday, so they are already aware of that as well. So we just wanted you to have a kind of a summary sheet of where we're at and how we're handling these swings, so you're aware if anybody asks you. Very helpful, Jefferson, thank you for putting this together for us.
You're welcome.
And is that the, is that variance the one we still need? What is the, which one is the number that we still need the city council to do the resolution for us to appropriate? Is it the fund balance, excess variance?
The total fund balance here, the 536 thou, $536,010 is what we'll bring forward to the city council. Um, obviously, a good chunk of that, $293,308 would be to offset the shortfall in the equity aid, and then the other amount would be an additional appropriation to our budget on the revenue side and the expenditure side, help with any other costs above beyond that, which, obviously, the equation that I built here shows the, how we're using those funds. Obviously, special education is always the outlier of any expenditures that we are dealing with in general.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. I feel really stupid asking this, but why do we have to go to the council to get permission to use our fund balance?
Because if it's on budgeted funds, it's, um, we have to have anything, especially over $20,000 has to go forward to the city council per charter.
I understand.
That's why we need to get the answer, yeah.
Right, yeah, I, I know those.
That's our city process, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
All right, uh, as Michael's mentioning in his report, uh, meeting on health insurance with U.S. National, is due October 28th, that'll be 6 o'clock right here in the cafeteria. I have invited, uh, the city and mayor, city manager and mayor, and requested the LSCC council, the baby, uh, board meetings, uh, leadership participate as well. Some other messages I was going to today to confirm that with them. We have invited, uh, the leadership from all three of our unions, the teachers, the sports staff, even, and the association, and by all of you all who posted as a, as a meeting, uh, we have, uh, checked out, um, right here. Unfortunately, Marie and Ruth asked today, we, we still have our goals meeting for, uh, the 14th time. It was the only day that we could all do, so we're gonna have to find another day for our goals meeting. Uh, the goals meeting, I just can't seem to have, I guess. So I don't know, if you want to say after this meeting tonight, you can maybe all, all of us get together and pick up a meeting date for it, see if we can get a, and count, and then we'll pick something, but, uh, I, I just felt badly about that.
I'm just, I'm okay, I'm okay now that Chris has picked up the, the slack on our goals, so, I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, she's been very, very helpful, for sure. So yeah, that meeting is all set for October 28th, so, good to go there. NHSBA resolutions, that meeting is coming up, Jane is your representative, she had sent you all, I think, an email.
Yeah.
Jane, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I'm hoping everyone had a chance to review what I sent out on October 9th, if I was transparent around what my plan was. I completely welcome feedback, lots of questions about my thought process around the voting.
I loved it. Okay, yeah, I mean, reading them, I, so I read them, and I, like, thought, and then I read yours, and I was like, oh, okay. It completely lined, I think, uh.
One.
Yeah, so I love it, of course, I didn't want to, don't, didn't want to respond to that email, I was like, I'll do, I'll tell her tonight, we're not having a, no meetings online. But yeah, I'm, I, I really, I really appreciate you sending that out.
Sure.
For everybody to take a look at.
Yeah, I know I represent all of us, so.
Yeah.
All right. And, um, and I actually would, along with this, I'd like to recognize my mother, who moved her birthday party date because of their change of the date of the resolution.
Oh.
So, but she said it was okay.
Okay. Thank you to her.
They're so accommodating, aren't they, moms are so.
Moms are the best.
They are. Uh, are there any, any questions for Jane? Go forth and prosper.
Okay.
That's the 25th, right?
Yes.
They really, they rolled that out in a weird way.
Okay, next up, I wanted to update you on the special education consortium, that's a very busy month for that particular initiative. Myself and Mary Moriarty from Inner Lakes, uh, as well as Heather Barker from the Super Tenants Association have been kind of spearheading this. We met with the Department of Education a couple of weeks ago, and they had made some charter school money available to us, made us aware of that. We've been working on a grant, Mary's done the yeoman's work of, of this, and submitted a grant to the Department of Education to try and access $1.5 million of charter school funds. The idea being that we could potentially have a location in a school or several satellite locations in the region to house this specialized program, and we would do it under a public charter, so we could access the charter school funds, uh, and use those funds to pay for startup costs. The Department of Education was actually very excited about this, and there's a lot of people around the state that are actually excited about what we're trying to accomplish here. So that, that, uh, application went in, uh, yesterday, the due date was yesterday, we had 12 days to get that together. We have at least 10 districts that are on board with us at this point, and there's others still considering it. We are, uh, contracting with an agency to do the study, feasibility study. So I expect to finalize that contract sometime this week to make that piece happen. Target date is, uh, fall of '27, so that would be a target date for us to, um, do all the work that would be necessary to have at least one location to start this. So that would be a target date for us to do all the work that would be necessary to have at least one location to start this programming. So I will continue to keep you updated on the progress that we make, or if we run into any roadblocks. But the wheels had turned quite a bit in the last month on this initiative. So I could take questions if this question's open.
Is there, is there a thought, is there like a target range for enrollment for 2027? Like a.
So in the, in the application, we were talking about up to 30 students. That's probably aggressive, but that was what we put in the application at this point. And the question really is going to become, where's the location? Is there going to be more than one location to suit the needs of the region? Because we are a fairly large geographical region. So these are things that will be worked out over the next two years, cut and paste.
What grade levels are we?
We're looking at K through 8. Yeah, we found out that charter school money can't be used to support preschool. So although we might use Lake's region district funds, this consortium fund for preschool, the charter school money can only be used for K-8. So that's how the grant is written at this point.
I'm assuming you looked into the ramifications of what the details are of operating, like where is this, who is going to head up this charter school, I guess?
So in the grant application, we have a board, a governance board that would consist of four superintendents in the region and four parents in the region. So that's the governance board. We would hire an executive director that would run the one location or the multiple locations if we end up going with more than one. And then we had the grant, you're required to put a whole bunch of things on paper about how this is going to work. So it's all in the grant, Marie. You know, if at some point somebody wants to see the grant, I can, I can show that to you.
I, I would love that.
Yeah, yeah, we can get, we can get you access to that.
That would be awesome, thank you.
The Inner Lake superintendent has it and finalized it, so I can get that from her and find a way to get it to you.
Or even in the board drive.
Yeah, I'll put it in the board drive for next time or as soon as I can get ahold of it. But, but yeah, but it's all laid out, it's pretty comprehensive. You have up to 50 pages in the charter school application to fill out and answer all their questions about this stuff. And, and they were really working with us, so they, we would submit it to them, they would give us some feedback. We would make revisions and send it back to them. Because like I said, I think they really do want it to be successful. They understand that the department had the need for what we're describing here. And they, they understand the need across the whole state, by the way, not just in our region. So that's why both, I think, the super tenants association and the special education association are both sponsoring and on board with this initiative as well. So we have a pretty good coalition built here that wants to see this play out and work, so. It's nice when nobody's working against you. So anyway, so that's kind of my update for that. Any other questions about where we're at with that? Okay. Alright, 24, 25 state assessment scores, they were in your drive. I have hard copies here, if anybody needs a hard copy, you can pass them around. We had a lengthy discussion at I two about this. Happy to answer any questions. Obviously, we want better scores than what we're seeing, and we've been talking about this. We've also talked about the fact that test scores is only one measure, standardized test scores is only one measure of how kids perform. Heard lots of stories about people's anxiety around standardized tests and maybe not being the best way to measure kids' performance. Unfortunately, it is the way that we get scored on terms of the way the feds measure progress and whatnot. And we are continued to be identified, both at the elementary and middle school, for comprehensive school improvement as well, so. But I just want to make sure you have, have the charts and understand, we've put the charts here so you can follow a cohort of kids. So if you work from left to right, you can see the percent proficient as the kids move across the grades. So you can look at every class that gets tested and how they perform year after year after year. What you want to see is percentages increasing as the kids go from grade to grade. That's what we want to do, is see a steady increase. We know the cohort isn't a completely true cohort, because we do have some transancy in the district. But that's the way that you should be looking at this, to say, are the kids improving as they go? Are they falling backwards as they go? The one thing I did want to share with you, a highlight, was that the math scores for third grade, 42% proficient was the best we've seen in a long, long time. That's the first group of kids that's non-COVID impacted, coming out of all the COVID that we've all dealt with over the years. So those kids were the first group that hasn't, that came after the COVID situation. They might have been impacted a little bit, they have kindergarten here.
They were full kindergarten.
No, they were full kindergarten, I think they were.
Masked, but had the social distance.
Right, they still had the social distance, but they were in school, well.
Full time.
Full time as well. So you, so we are seeing the shutdown of the schools COVID impact changing. I'm not sure we're seeing a change in the impact of COVID, because we are seeing some increased needs at the preschool kindergarten level. And that's actually being seen nationwide in terms of the, this extreme needs of kids, which is what's driving this consortium, by the way, that we've talked about before, so. Anyways, I can answer any questions if someone wants to add.
We got Mike, Marie, Jane.
Do your parents get to see the scores of their children with any standardized testing? Like, do they know?
Yes, they get sent home. And we get individualized, we get an individualized report on every kid.
Is it like a percentile, or is it just like a?
No, they get a, they get a, it's a number on a graph, but it shows you what proficiency level they're at.
Okay.
So if you're a one, two, three, or four, it shows you where you fall in that range. And it describes for parents what each range means and all that.
Thanks, answered my question.
Great. I just wanted to mention that in our efforts to redefine academic success, I went and spoke with Jewel and Dave Cole regarding the AI tools that they have available. And then they also talked about the Department of Education and they're changing their platform to, to, so that they can also keep track of other benchmarks to identify academic success other than just the assessments.
It's called Data Studio. And it's, it's new, new and free this year for the first time. We did talk a little bit about it in I two, for those of you that weren't in the I two meeting. But we can use that and we can import our local data from any local assessments that we want to into this tool and use that tool along with these as well. So that's something that we were going to talk through at I two and start to work on this year and provide some of that data. Because we did talk at I two about some other data that shows that kids are doing, are improving and doing better in certain areas, so.
Yeah, I was really impressed to hear that. I think that's really what we need, we need other defining elements.
We need a place to tell the story. I mean, this is such an incomplete story that I'm really glad you brought it up, because it is really cool that we can, there's so many other things that we can look at and like tell a more complete story with that.
Right, exactly, I was really impressed to hear about that.
Yeah.
Great.
Jane.
When, when the scores come back, are the, are these based on only the kids that were present? I'm, I'm wondering if.
Yes.
So, so the absences are taken out?
Taken out.
Do, do we know, and I know attendance has been on the rise, and I know Tim's been doing great work with that. Do, do we know how our attendance rate was for testing last year? I'm just, I'm just curious.
It varies from grade to grade, very high at the lower grades.
Yeah.
And then as we get into high school, I mean, SATs, and Dave can speak to SATs, but not every kid takes the SAT yet. And we do everything we can to try to get them to take it. But the, the participation rates are lower at the higher, higher, in the higher grades. But, I mean, the, the SAS test that's given from grades three through eight, I mean, unless a parent opts the child out, we have to put them in front of it. We can't physically.
Even if it's a different day.
Yeah, we have to do sub, you know, substitute days and, you know, and all that kind of stuff. But I, I think at the, at the high school level, Dave, I don't know if you know the participation rate off the top of your head, but it's, it's, it's not 100. It's probably 70%.
Probably 50, 60%. We're, we, the first, last three years, we've done everything to get kids here.
Right.
To take it. But the flip side is that they don't want to be here, and they're taking the test really quickly and they're.
Oh, rushing.
They're rushing through and, and or they know, they just have to be here to do it, and they just go click, click, click. So your student that gets 1,200 and the student that gets 400, because they don't want to be here, you just wash away the score.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, and ask Dave and Ginny to be here tonight, just in case any questions come up about this, if there's any questions. I mean, the bulk of the testing happens at the middle school, although fourth grade now is at elementary, so Jay will have two years. Jay's out sick tonight, by the way, he would have been here, just to let you know. But Ginny, there's the biggest burden up until this point, was all of her grades test in all, in pretty much all the subjects, so.
I'm going to guess my question for both of you is, is do you feel like there needs to be a, the community banding together to, to help promote attendance? Like, is attendance an issue, or is it, is it just a piece?
I don't really feel like it's an issue at the middle school. Because we, if, if the child hasn't been opted out, then we are pretty successful at having them test. That being said, we do have a lot of students that have been opted out by parents that are, could be a huge asset to our scores.
Okay.
But, you know, which I think is unfortunate.
Yep, that's good to know, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I mean, it's like every time another one comes in, we're like, oh my God, no, not them!
Okay.
But, you know, because we're frustrated, because we're working so hard and the teachers are working so hard and they're doing the modular testing so the kids are, are familiar with the platform and they're, you know, they're spending all this time and energy trying to make sure they're covering what they need to cover. And it's really demoralizing to, you know. We, we change our schedule so that everyone in the entire building is testing. We have snacks that are either donated or purchased, depending on the year. And so that kids have healthy snacks during the testing, that there are breaks built in. We have, you know, if kids are super focused and trying their hardest, their, their, their monitors have little tickets that they just casually drop off and they're, you know, wherever they're testing, so that they get some sort of, you know, like whether it's an ice cream sandwich or a cookie or something. You know, like we do things to encourage them to try their hardest. And that's like always our message, is we just want you to try. Just try, yes.
Are opt-out rates tracked? Are they published? And how do our opt-out rates compare to other schools?
I can, I mean, I have the information, there, you know, I don't have an actual rate off the top of my head, but I can get that for the, like, if you want me to bring it to I two.
It would help our joint.
I was, I'd be curious to see, like, comparison, if it's probably more or less in line.
Yeah, I do all those schools do that, I'm circling. But it required money. Does it require money? It is free for them to take.
Okay.
But most colleges now do not require the SATs, you know. So it's not, we did it because you needed to do it to get into college.
Right.
We need it for scholarships. Yes, there's some scholarship money.
But money's not preventing them from taking it.
It's a state standard, it's a state assessment, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, they made it the state required test. That's why they paid them, because it is now the state.
It was expensive.
It was expensive.
It's like 60 bucks.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So Dave and Ginny, thanks so much for staying, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before I continue, I just want to acknowledge and, and recognize Adam Heath. Adam, congratulations.
Thank you.
On your election, welcome. We mentioned you earlier.
I was, I was at a volleyball game, I broke speed limits trying to get you around, but I do appreciate the call.
Alright, next up, Liz wanted to give a legislative update, because this is legislative season and there's all kinds of LSRs out there. She did a nice job at the city council meeting with kind of updating where we're at, so I'll turn that over to her.
Okay, so this will be quick, but I realize I'm updating the city council about this, I should probably update the school board about this as well. It's like, it's like preseason, because we're gearing up for next spring. But I did just want to show, also, most of you, all of you should be getting the NHSBA updates. Those emails are incredible, so this is probably review, but they are currently following approximately 300 LSR or Legislative Service requests. And there are two main categories, bills that have direct impact on governance, school board roles and responsibilities, or day-to-day operations of the schools. And then there are those bills that pertain to election law, procedures, tax-related things, or they're kind of not sure where they're going to fall yet. And then there are two relevant committees, the Committee to Study Reducing the Number of SAUs in the state and the Commission to Study Costs of Special Education. So that's what the state is kind of working on. I will be attending, and it's free because we're members, anybody else? On December 17th, from 12 to 1:30, there is, it's called, it was in the most recent one, it is the 2026 New Hampshire Legislative Preview. So that's when they'll be going over the next section of like how they're pairing these down to kind of just get us familiar with what we're looking at. It is December 17th, it's a Wednesday.
12.
12 to 1:30, I think, yes. And so you can register right there, it's through Engageify, which, it's fine, once you get in, Engageify is fine. And so that's the legislative update. And then I did just want to do an update, there was some language in HB2 that we were a little nervous about, because it was vague regarding, it was basically anti-DEI language, but it was overly broad in that the example that was used was if we wanted to use money to create an accessible playground, that could cause us to have funding be pulled, because we would be targeting a specific group based on a, a, one measure. So because we would be, because it was focused on people with disabilities. So, and that was discriminatory according to this. So, an update on that is that a federal court in New Hampshire ruled that, so the core issue was the language and the broad scope. So on Thursday, October 2nd, the federal court found the language of the law is too unclear, making it difficult for school districts to know what is or isn't a violation, as well as stating that federal law would take precedence over the state law in regards to the ban on DEI and the, the language in HB2. So currently, the judge's decision protects all New Hampshire school districts from that being enforced at the moment, because it placed a widespread injunction on it, so we can continue accessing funds and that is not going to be an issue currently. So that's, that's kind of the update that I want to give.
I'm not sure if this is the proper place to bring this or not, or if I should do it at Late Items or something, but I got a phone call from Dan McGuire, representative today, in regards to an email that I supposedly sent to him. And he is on the Finance Committee, the Education Finance Committee, or the Fin, the State Finance Committee, I'm sorry. And he wanted to know, I guess apparently it's regarding this study about reducing the number of SAUs in the state. And there was an article that I read about it. And so he was saying that if we wanted to talk to him about the details of this study and what it would mean to the SAUs, what it would mean to the Board of Directors, what it would mean to the superintendents, what it would mean to the principals, so on and so forth, that he was, they were more than willing to hear from us. But if it was about whether we like, we agreed with the bill or didn't agree with the bill, this would not be the proper time to do that. So I have not called him back, this was just a voicemail I got. And he said, you know, tonight to call him back. But I, I don't know where he got my name from, but, because I did not send an email to any of our, to any of our representatives. And so I'm just not sure if this is something that I should respond to, or maybe if we have something that the board wants to know about this, we can go to them and get information about this, or if it's even anything we want to pursue. I just saw it right now, and I'm really not sure what to do with that phone call. Yeah. Um, my answer is, I mean, I'm wondering if we have any questions, just ask them first, and then see if there is something that we have to know. Um, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I guess there is something specific, and we might have to, we can absolutely, um.
Yeah, all we know is that there was a study commission that's out there looking at how many superintendents, and, um, I think there's been a ton, a ton of other.
There's a whole lot of information, and there, like, there's, uh, there's been a couple of research studies, apparently not, it's not, um, you know, it's, 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 one says, yes, that, you know, school districts would be able to save money, others say we're not saving any money, um, because of different, there's, there's nothing concrete, the studies are not concrete as to which way we would benefit.
So he's chairing a commi, a committee that's studying this.
Yes.
And I think what they're charged with is coming back with some kind of report or something. So whether or not that turns into any kind of legislation or not, is anyone's guess, I guess, at this point, but, I mean, that's how it ended last year and this committee was formed to do this study. Um, so that's about all that I know about that, Marie.
Is that anything that we want to find out more information about, or do we not care, or?
So I know that there are, um, there's a school board advocacy network that, um, a bunch of people on different school boards are a part of, and I think they've been outreach by, and other people, and a couple of them are going to it. The last I heard was that the, the last one, it came out that a number of people on the committee were actually not aware of the division of responsibility between school boards and superintendents, and a lot of them were under the assumption that a lot of things that superintendents actually do was under the purview of school boards. So it looks like right now, it's, it is like a fact-finding info gathering, uh, portion for them. Um, I don't know if there's anything we want to offer, or, I don't, if we do have, are there any questions that we have? Is this to know that if we, we have an avenue in case, in case any show up, so we can?
Well, this is what I'm thinking, I mean, like, this is a representative that's reaching out to us, you know, do we have anything that we want to, any information we want to give to them in the process of this study, or any information we want to get from them?
Yeah.
And what their goals are, what they're trying, I mean, we understand that the goal is to reduce the SAUs, but, um, or there's, there's, the study is to find out whether that's feasible or not, but is there any, anything that we, I, I guess I just want to know, do I just ignore this, or do, or should we as a board, uh, reach out?
Why don't we, why don't we see, if, why don't we have Dan talk to the administrators in the district, see if they, if there are any questions, or if there's anything really pressing that you do want them to know, and then you can follow up and we can pass it along if there is anything?
Dan McGuire.
That's not one of ours.
Is that your information?
No. Where's, where's he from?
He probably reached out because you're information.
He said I sent him an email. I never sent him an email. I even looked to make sure that I wasn't like drinking one night or something. I searched.
I got really frightened.
I don't, I've never heard of this guy, so no, I did not send him out an email.
They got, they got a legal.
What town?
Merrimack, 14th district.
Yes.
Merrimack, okay. Okay. I appreciate you bringing that up.
State-wide study.
Business study.
Yeah.
For the entire state.
Yeah, for the entire state.
Okay. I, I really, I really appreciate you bringing that forward. Um, if we don't have anything now, I think we can, we can kick it, and then if anything, questions or information comes up, would you be okay with, would you be okay with Marie to pass that along?
I'm studying, seeing, uh, with the, I'm assuming he wants to study that.
Yeah. I'm sending it regarding that. They were not really very enthusiastic. In fact, they, they said that the school board thinks that accountability is a dirty little word.
That's a heck of a way to be not accountable. Uh, but that's, does that, does that work? Does that sound okay?
Yes, yes, yeah, let me know, because I just, I don't want to close out this avenue if it's something that we can, you know, benefit from, or, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, let, let's leave it open for a little bit and see if any, see if we have anything.
Okay.
Perfect, cool.
All right, my last item, I'll invite Carissa to come up and speak about this as well, is the District Digest was put together in the first edition. I have a couple of hard copies, if anyone wants.
City Council.
I would love one.
Yes.
Yeah, if anyone wants a hard copy, I have a few of them. Uh, we, we did fix, uh, in the digital copy, we did fix the November election date, there's no election in November this year.
Not here.
Not here.
It's not here, it is Election Day, it is on my calendar, but it's not for us.
But, I asked Carissa to speak this, she did a wonderful job putting this together for you. Carissa, you are on.
If you have any ideas for what could go on the next District Digest, bless you. I remember, well, in my notes, um, I have notes that say that I don't want it, it's like, how can you make the school board meetings really digestible to the public? So I'm taking the school board packets and some of the conversations here, putting it in the digest, so it literally is digestible. And then other things like, um, student recognition, those kinds of things.
Things that I thought that I would like to see added is, um, like some sort of, uh, bullet on what's coming up, what's coming up to get people to attend the meetings, like some sort of, uh, hook to say, okay, we're going to be discussing this at this coming, at this next meeting, um, please come share your thoughts. And then the other thing that I was thinking was like some sort of a cartoon, or a puzzle, or some sort of.
How interruptive.
Um, interactive activity so that people will look through it and, you know, and sometimes that's, you know, like, I'm, I'm looking, like, I'll get the, uh, Laconia Sun just because I like to do the crossword papers, crossword puzzles, but I will look at the rest of the paper too, you know.
We do something like, uh, we have a, another communication channel in the district that goes out on Wednesdays, and there's a trivia question in there, and then staff can submit it to Stacy, and then there's a random drawing for, what is it, gift card? So we can do something like that.
Weekly staff riddle we do, it's kind of been a pretty big hit, actually.
You can hide like a little tornado somewhere, and if you find a tornado, let us know a page or something, I don't know.
Yeah, anything like that to get people interested, because I know I'm sitting there over my cup of coffee and I'll play with the crossword puzzle, and then I'll start reading the rest of the paper, and then I'll go back to the crossword puzzle and figure out the things I couldn't figure out first, so.
The, the other thing about the Digest is that it isn't tended to be digital, so that the first two pages, we talked about this, because it's, it is, it will be expensive to print, so the first two pages would be what you all put out in the community with that QR code that goes to the longer version. So that's, that's how the goal is supposed to work. Maybe y'all find some secret money and we can print real newspapers or something like that, but, um, that's the goal, is to just have the one, the one page that goes out and that people can use a QR code to access the whole thing.
Uh, one other thing that I was thinking about is maybe a little column from, um, our student representative possibly, or, um, a student to, you know, pick a topic that they're, that they're really passionate about for some reason, and I don't know, what, are you, do you have thoughts about that at all?
I'm not right now, I definitely have to think about that, though.
We can even be like, um, like last month, when we had the young man from the middle school come up and say, you know, can, why doesn't everybody give an update? We can have that be a channel, an avenue. We can have like student reporters and they have a little column about what's going on in, in their grade and stuff, we can identify students who'd be interested in that.
Yeah, or anything that, you know, uh, regarding current events or whatever, you know, anything that's on their mind that, that's bothering them, or that they would like to know more information about, or, you know, I'm just, I'm just throwing out.
Um, and next month, we're also going to put, um, the dashboard to track our humanity goals in the Digest, so it's going to be online, and then also went to a digital, so that's how we communicate out those, um, school goals. Um, all right, Carissa.
Yeah. Do you need any help from us? Do we need to pick up and drop off anywhere?
That's your goal number two.
Okay.
So when your goals committee meets, is to like, what are the channels?
Okay.
Um, so if you, and like if you want a smaller version with just the QR code that you can put places so people can scan it, whatever you want, but that's your job is to identify the channels to push it out. So I know, Kayla, you've been pushing out to Franklin websites, if you have something like that, that's the part that the district, you would need help with you all from.
Okay.
You know, they'll produce the content, but you'll get it out.
If nobody, if they don't get together by November 1st, um, is there, do you want us to reach out to you and maybe get the paper ones that we could physically hand out, or?
Yeah, you, you can figure that out on your own, tell me what you want.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you, Carissa.
Thank you.
That's my goal.
Thank you so much for doing that, Carissa. I was like having a panic attack, and here I am trying to teach myself Canva. Three hours into it, I decide to look on the SAU website, and I'm like, oh, she's already done it, yay!
We've got people to do the work for you, we just need to know what the work is, that's all.
It is a nice design.
Um, and then the, we also have through Thrill Share, um, there was an update to Thrill Share, which is a newsletter format, so it'll be easier for, um, folks to get newsletters out, so we're playing with that, what that looks like. It might, it might be the two-page, it goes out like that, and the rest of it's the newsletter format, that's nice and easy to prep. Um, I'm going to ask you to mark your calendars for January 21st, for our, um, Portrait of a Graduate Humanity Summit. I'll send an email to you all. Um, Liz said that was the one Wednesday in January that worked.
It really.
Nice.
Yeah.
Um, and the goal is to have students, our initial goal is to have students report out on some of the work that they've been doing, similar to what you, kind of what you saw here, but really focused on the humanity piece. Um, and the next five weeks, for the middle school anyway, for, uh, their advisory, their community meetings is focused on humanity, so they'll have some good content to share with, with the team. And Liz, and Dan, and I, and James are figuring that out.
Do you have a time and location for the summit?
Nope. On a, somewhere on a Franklin campus, and I'll get you the time. I'm also asking folks, I'm sending an email out to people that I know make community meetings, like, that are in charge of those, to say like, can you hold this date so we can get as many people as we can? Because I know sometimes our meetings, someone else has a meeting, so they can't go in, so they can choose, but we can, it's enough time. Marie?
Um, I'm sorry if I missed this, or it's been asked before, and we talked about the QR codes, have we talked about using yard signs?
About using what?
Yard signs.
Uh, no, but we can investigate that, if we can get one QR code that's always the same. Yep. Absolutely. Uh, I think I have some secret money for that.
Secret sign money.
Tag.
No, I have a little one on.
Right.
Right?
What a lost sign.
Uh, report card committee started last week, which was a really good opportunity for the principals to get together, and we have three teachers from every building, um, so they, this is one of the, um, the.
Strategic plan.
Thank you, strategic plan goals, is to align the report cards to the portrait, and, um, not that all three report cards at the schools are the same, but that they're coordinated, um, and they're connected to the Portrait of a Graduate. So that was our first day, uh, day, we have a whole year of work that we're going to be doing with that. Uh, we also have personalized learning plan and student-like conference, uh, we have a very small committee that's working on that starting next week. And that's all I have for you. I think that's it. Is there something else?
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is those report card drafts will come to you as a board, uh, no later than June, for you to approve, to be started, to be used for next school year, so that'll be our process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Carissa.
And that's all I have.
All right.
For this portion.
Sweet. Uh, so my understanding, school board goals still looking to meet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll get you all together and, uh, figure that out after. Um, so we will jump to item 13, policy. As I mentioned, these are policies that are coming through, updated in the spring legislative update, so we have a number for first read and one that we need to withdraw, so we'll need two motions for those.
Let us check.
Who's vote?
Uh, I move that we accept policies EBV, IHV, IHBI, IHCA, INAH, JIC, JLCF, uh, that we, uh, that we accept those, uh, first reads as presented.
Motion by Jane. Second by Marie. Any questions on it? All of us, if you have any, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes, objections, those that are accepted, thank you.
I made a motion that we draw policy, I have.
No, just a, like, second, second, I heard, any questions on it? All right, all of us, if you have any, please say aye. Aye. Any votes, objections, I made a draw. Thank you all. Uh, sitting with those, we'll go there for second read, and there'll be more.
Hold on.
Um, item 14, linked items or other, I have one, if anybody else has one, please.
So we have the, kind of, for, for, so, you know, so, there's eight conditions, going to, I just hear, there's, uh, second, third, fourth.
Could you set up a pressure, like, you said, there's, I, I, because I, I really, I think I followed the way I, I, so.
It is from the, uh, school board specifically.
The ones that want to pass, we're protected.
Okay. Did Brenda receive, um, calls, or, uh, I know she put herself out in the community to help with the Free and Reduce Launch application, I know you had shared it on some sites. Did Brenda get some, some results from that?
She did get some.
Okay.
Yeah, she actually informed me that today.
Okay.
That she got some, yeah, so there's some positive outcome.
Great.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
Thank you. Mine is related, Laurie, so I'll jump in, um, regarding calendars, events, everything. Um, I don't know her name, and so I do apologize to the camera. Um, a lovely woman after city council last week, uh, approached me and talked to me about the district presence on the city website, and I thought it was better than it is, and it is not that great slash not really existent, and so we are aware, we are in a time of transition, we have a new, uh, city manager, but once things settle down, we are going to chat with him and introduce the idea of, I mean, we are so closely related to the city, it would be nice for SAU 18 to have a landing page, have a link. There is, if you go into calendars, there is one link that doesn't actually go to our calendars, it goes to the main district page, so there's a way to get there, but things like our, our agenda, our packet, we would like to see those things on there, so, um, it, that was part of what was brought to me, because she's really curious about what's going on in the schools, but it's difficult to find, so if we could put those things in line, we would like to do that, um, and just make the school a little bit more visible, make it more easily accessible. So I want to thank her for that, apologize if I don't know your name, um, but that was a good idea, so we are, I just want to let everybody know that we're going to work on that conversation, knowing things are a little slow right now, um, with all the, the chaos.
Uh, I have met personally with the new city manager, Mitch.
Yes.
And I can tell you that, um, well, city communication and clarity overall, but especially the website is a high priority.
Next, good, good. So we're going to throw our, throw our hat in that ring.
We'll work on that.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
And we do blast out this meeting, the packet for this meeting, every month, so.
Okay.
That's, it's just a blast, it's.
Yeah. And it, everything is appreciated, absolutely, it's just, yeah, yeah.
Find new avenues, more avenues.
Yes, more avenues, get it out there. Um, so that is it, so thank you, everybody. Do you have any other?
Just that we need another non-public.
We do need another non-public. Does anybody have any other late items or other items before we do that?
Um, I was just wondering about, uh, the financial information that is sent to the, the council or the city manager, it, it's a different form. I had mentioned before that, you know, with the Joint Finance Committee, they're like, why don't you give us this? And you're like, we have been giving you that, and they didn't know about it, so I was just wondering if we were still going to be getting that information as well, so that we know what they're seeing, like we have it all in front of us?
Yeah, we're working on updating that information right now, obviously. We haven't had any contact with the city in a while, so, usually it's obviously sent to them the week before their, meetings, city council meetings, um, but at this point, we haven't updated the information for the current school year, but we'll start doing that, yeah.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to follow.
Thank you, Laurie. Thank you, Marie. Any other items? All right, then, I will take a motion to go into non-public. Oh, wait, sorry. Second public participation, uh, another half an hour. Second public participation, another half an hour, three minutes per person. State your name and your ward if you would like to speak. Do we have any members of the public who would like to address?
The school board.
All right, seeing none, we will close that. Now we need to seal.
No, no.
Now we're going to do that at the end. Okay, now we can.
Do we know what?
Personnel.
So personnel, so just like this.
Yeah, A, B, C.
Yeah, so I made a motion that we enter non-public session in accordance with RSE 91A, three, two, A, B, and C regarding personnel and a student matter.
Motion made by Michael, seconded by Kayla. Roll call vote, please.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Liz and Gina.
Yes.
Lori Danforth.
Yes.
Lori Cass.
And Cody.
Yes.
Michael Valardo.
Yes.